All right, we are streaming and recording.
All right, it is seven o'clock. I will call the Monday, May 22 regular board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Yep, got it. You bet. Thank you. No worries. Sorry, technical difficulties for the TV station, so we're good though. All right, roll call Diane Koser.
Here.
Don Kuski here. Steve Bowman.
Here.
Phil Henkel.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Here.
Marion Barbara.
Here.
Bert Richard. Nellie Shire.
Here.
Doug Kuchko.
Here.
And can you tell us if a proper notice was given for this meeting?
Yes, please be, please be advised that public notice of this meeting as required by sections 19.84 and 65.90 of the Wisconsin statutes has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the official newspaper, the Rice Lake Chronotype, to the Eau Claire Leader, and to radio stations WJMC and WAQE indicating the date, time, and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than 24 hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. It does appear that a proper notice was given for this meeting. Now, if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every heat and justice for all.
All right, we are now at the appearance section on the agenda, and we have Abby Fisher signed up to speak to us. Welcome.
All right, ready when you are. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, Randy. My name is Abby Fisher, and my pronouns are she/her, and I live in Rice Lake. I come before the board tonight to recognize the outstanding work and contributions of a significant number of this year's graduating seniors. When these students were in middle school, they recognized that our district lacked explicit safe places policies and a student group for our students who are LGBTQIA+ and their allies. Recognizing those needs, these students worked with each other, with district staff, and with administrators to establish the GSA student groups at both the middle school and the high school. Those groups give students a place to be themselves, whether they're in the rainbow or allies, and it's a place for the students to learn and to collaborate. These groups are dynamic, they are exciting, and they are supportive. The group members are incredible advocates for themselves and their peers. The graduating seniors were a driving force behind the board policies adopted in 2017 that respected and supported our LGBTQIA+ students. Those policies also included a mandate from the board for our district to provide professional development opportunities to district staff and to provide opportunities for community members to learn about gender and sexuality. These students made us a better district and community. And when the board decided to undo that positive policy work, those students, those seniors, taught the younger students about advocacy, about courage, and about leadership. They came together to tell you, the board, and our community that they're still here and that they matter. Congratulations to the entire graduating class of 2023, and especially those students who were trailblazers for our LGBTQIA+ community here in Rice Lake.
Thank you. All right, next we have the approval of the regular session and closed session meeting minutes from Monday, May 8. Motion to approve. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. The minutes have been approved. Next, we have the consent agenda where we have three employment resignations and four employment recommendations. Now, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the consent agenda has been approved. Next, we get to do one of the more exciting things that we get to do here on the, at the board level, and that is to recognize some of our outstanding students. And so, we will start off with the WOW building. And we've, up here next to Mr. Drost is a nice little place to take pictures. If anybody wants to take pictures, that's a nice area for that.
Hi, my name is Kristy Theres. I'm one of the teachers at WOW, and I'm here to represent and award Cyrus Owanape the board recognition tonight. Cyrus has been a student of ours for three years, and he's been quite a student for us. He kind of is a late bloomer, and he is a very intelligent young man, but didn't always apply himself during school. But he really wanted to graduate, and at, at the time, as his time drew near this year, he was really concerned about walking the stage. And so, we found an opportunity for him to do some competency-based learning because the traditional learning just really didn't fit his style. So, we found an opportunity with Northwoods Technical College, and Cyrus really knocked it out of the park. He completed his work in three weeks and has obtained his graduation status, and he will walk the stage with his class. We're very, very excited for Cyrus. Mrs. Haverne and I are so pleased for him, and we're so proud of him, and we're very excited to watch him walk that stage on Friday night. So, congratulations, Cyrus.
Mr. Chairman, I was just thinking in connection with that, for our board retreat, maybe one of the topics could be how to strengthen ties between NTC and the WOW program. This is great. Well. Not your diploma.
And I'd give him a hug, but he absolutely hates hugs, right Cyrus?
Congratulations.
It's just a gift for two of you.
All right, next we'll do the Rice Lake High School.
That was awesome.
Good evening. Mark Bice from the high school, but today I am speaking on behalf of Susan Franco from the high school, and also a couple of Logan's classmates. So, next to me is Logan Davis. He is a junior. He is the son of Ja, Justin and Ashley Davis. I'm going to first read what Mrs. Franco wrote, and then I'm going to also read a couple sentences from a couple of your classmates and what they wrote. Logan lost one of his best friends four days before he performed his solos for the Wisconsin School Music Association District Solo and Ensemble and advanced to state on both pieces. At WSMA State Solo and Ensemble, Logan earned an explanatory soloist example for his musical theater performance. He made a very moving connection, connection with the judge. This award is the highest honor for solo performances in the state and quite, in band and choir in the state of Wisconsin. In the choir room, he is always looking for new challenges to keep pushing himself to succeed. He said in both of his performances that he did them for his good friend. It meant a lot to him. Other choir students can see his passion and drive to not give up. He has been through so much, has so much love from his family and support from his friends. In the words of Mrs. Franco, "I'm very proud of him." I want to read a couple quotes to you, Logan, from some of your classmates that are in your choir and watch you every day. This is what a couple of your female classmates wrote. Logan Davis, to me, is a light in the dark. He's always looking out for those around him, making sure they're okay, even if he has his own problems going on. From one of your other classmates, Logan Davis is more than deserving to receive the Student of the Month Award. Logan is one, if not the best and most caring and compassionate people I've ever met. He's always been there to help me when I've needed it, and he has never left until I let him know that I'm okay, or we both can end up laughing together. Logan, thank you and great job.
How embarrassing to picture.
Not at all, exactly.
All right, we are going to move on to Hilltop Elementary.
Hi, my name is Erin Zemitis. I am the ELL teacher at Hilltop Elementary, and I chose a very wonderful student. Her name is Kimmy Yang, and she, I know she would be here tonight if she could drive. Unfortunately, she's only nine, so she doesn't have yet. But Kimmy and her family moved to Rice Lake from Washington towards the end of her second grade year last year, and it was a huge transition for her. They had a lot of family in Washington. Here, they had none. She's now in third grade here at Hilltop, and working with her is one of the best parts of my day. It's a half hour where we get to talk and share great stories, and it's just the best. She's very respectful, and she has two siblings, one who has exceptional needs, and another who is only four years old, and she helps mom and dad out a ton with them. So, she's a very respectful and helpful daughter, and she's a very thoughtful and loving big sister, and she's an intelligent and hard-working student. She's brimming with curiosity and a fierce protector of what is right. I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to work with her, as I'm sure she's going to go on to accomplish many great things. And I know this was very important to her, because when I told her about it, she started, she just broke down and started crying, and then I started crying. We had a really good hug, so I'm sorry you guys didn't get to meet her tonight, but hopefully sometime in the future.
Tainter Elementary.
Hi.
Hi.
This is McKenna Roosevelt. She didn't join us until just into her second year. See, the problem with McKenna is that she had just suffered the loss of her dad. So, when she joined us, she was really struggling with some really tough personal challenges. She continues to work every day and work her way through the situation that she finds herself in. She is working on shifting her mind from negative thinking, like the world's out to get her, or only bad things happen to me, to knowing that, you know what, there are tough situations out there, but that doesn't mean that everything is bad. McKenna's also started to be able to see that there are other points of view than just her own. That's a little tougher where mom's concerned, but she's working on it, and when she is thinking, when she's got her body and her brain regulated, she can even see mom's point of view. She has ability to see another person's perspective and is a challenge that adult, that challenge in seeing that perspective from someone else's point of view is a challenge that adults struggle with too. McKenna's going to be heading to the middle school in the fall, and even though we'll miss her a lot, I am absolutely positive that the middle school will be enriched by her great sense of humor and her ability to problem-solve through some really tough situations. I wish we could keep her, but we can't.
Hagen Elementary.
Are you going to use that high-tech camera, Sally? Good evening, everyone. My name is Lori Newman. I am an elementary school counselor at Hilltop and Hagen Schools. I would like to recognize Kennedy Drost. Kennedy always participates in my second step classes. She is empathetic to all students and truly cares about others. Even last week, when a student couldn't think of a time when he felt left out, she tried to help him by giving him some suggestions to him. When I was walk, when I walk into her class, she is always very friendly, asks me, seriously asks me how I'm doing. No one else is asking me that but Kennedy, or if she can help with my things that I'm carrying or open the door for me. She really is an example of what Rice Lake Area School District Warrior Way student is. Outside of my class, she is so fun to talk to. She is a great big sister. She works hard helping with chores at home. She will tell me about the turkeys and when they will be delivered, and how many of them, right, and how they work to keep them active and alive. Also, when the bird flu was going on, we talked a lot about the bird flu and the concerns with that. She never, ever complains in school about siblings or having to help out at home. I am excited for Kennedy's future because I am surely she will be successful.
Okay, yeah, we'll get mom first. We'll do mom first.
Oh, mom. Oh, no.
All right, next we will move on to the Rice Lake Middle School, and we'll start with Quinn Ebner. He was not able to join us, but we'll still get a chance to hear all about Quinn.
Lori Lee from Rice Lake Middle School. The eighth grade team wanted to tell everyone how thankful they are that Quinn Ebner started attending the Rice Lake Middle School this year. What a wonderful addition he has made to our building. Quinn is being nominated as the eighth grade student of the month for May for many reasons. Not only does Quinn excel academically due to his diligent daily work, but he is also an outstanding citizen of the Rice Lake Middle School. Quinn consistently exudes positivity and spreads joy to his teachers and classmates daily. Quinn is responsible, friendly, and easy to talk to, making him a natural leader. He is always willing to work with others and has the ability to make those around him feel respected and valued. Quinn is well-liked by his classmates and teachers and has maintained a positive reputation throughout the year. Additionally, Quinn is mature and reflective. This can be seen in his high-quality work and in how he carries himself. Quinn works hard each day and always wears a smile. He has a beautiful speaking voice and a calming presence about him. Overall, Quinn consistently shows strong leadership skills, perseveres in his daily work to reach academic excellence, and is kind to all. It's an absolute pleasure to have Quinn in our eighth grade classes as he represents what the Warrior Way is all about. As his teachers, we are proud of Quinn and grateful for the strong positive influence he adds to our building. Congratulations, Quinn.
Hi, I'm Mary Curvosa, school counselor at Rice Lake Middle School. Also, my student is not able to be here as well. I am nominating Sydney Turner for the May 2023 Student of the Month at Rice Lake Middle School. I've known Sydney since fifth grade, when she first entered the middle school as a very shy, hesitant student. Over the last four years, I've had, I've watched Sydney grow into a confident, mature, and resilient young woman. Sydney has learned to become her very best advocate. Learning and life are not always easy, and Sydney has demonstrated over and over her ability to persevere, whether it's in the classroom, playing hockey, or dealing with an injury. She is always determined to not give up and do her very best. When it comes to kid, character, Sydney is top-notch. She is one of the most polite, respectful students I have ever worked with. She follows the Warrior Way in all of her daily interactions with classmates and adults. Sydney is definitely a role model to all of her classmates. I wish her all the best and continued success as she moves on to the high school. Thank you.
Hilltop one.
Yeah.
All right, let's bring Hilltop back up, and let's redo Hilltop, please.
Turns out she can drive.
That's right.
Probably walked if I know her. She'd get here.
You can come over, sir, if you want to come over here by Mr. Drost. There's a nice angle straight on.
Thank you.
There you go.
All right, so friends, here is Ms. Kimmy Yang. Her and her family moved to Rice Lake from Washington towards the end of her second grade year, and it was a pretty big transition for her. She's now in third grade here at Hilltop, and working with her is one of the best parts of my day. She's a respectful and helpful daughter, a thoughtful and loving big sister, and an intelligent and hard-working student. She is brimming with curiosity and a fierce protector of what is right. I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to work with her, as I'm sure she's going to go on and accomplish many great things.
One, one moment. We'll have Marion come up and join you.
Here, we'll look at, look over at dad first.
Right, well, congratulations to all of our students that received recognition this evening, and I would like to let you know that your names will be added to the list of all the previous recipients this school year, and at our next board meeting, we will be drawing a name out of, out of the basket, and one lucky winner will receive a Chromebook. So, good luck for that. So, thank you for being here. We will take a brief pause if you want to take the time to head out, or you can stay and watch the rest of this exciting meeting. I don't understand. They always laugh at that. It's really not meant to be funny. From what I could tell, she went to the bathroom and refused to come out. She was, wasn't sure she was going to be here. Head that way, and I seen mom. Lori went that way, and then dad's gone, and so I'm pretty sure they kind of all. All right, we'll bring the meeting back to order. All right, Phil.
Phil went rogue on us.
All right, so we will get started. Our report section, first item is the May is Mental Health Month. So, we will get to hear mental health services in the Rice Lake Area School District.
All right, I think it was kind of an interesting segue as we talked about some of the strengths of our students and the resiliency that some of them have shown to go into that school mental health update, especially as we talk about May as the mental health month. The slide here, we talked a little bit about working together, and I have a list of a lot of the pupil service team members, but really, we could have added teachers, administrators, families, students. I mean, it takes all of us when it comes to really identifying students that might be struggling, families that might be struggling. But these are really kind of the key people within the school system that work with students and families when we have identified somebody that might be struggling. The right-hand side are a lot of the, the community partners that we work with. As we go further into the slides, you'll kind of see some of the people that are really the liaisons between those that are needing services and those community partners. So, this slide here really talks about kind of the continuum of mental health and all of the different services and ways that we go about trying to provide services. And so, kind of at the beginning part there, the continuum of mental health supports is really from being well to areas of struggle and kind of that whole circle that people that are struggling with mental well-being go through. The collaboration is really about, again, kind of like I talked in the first slide, bringing those community people together along with the people throughout the school to try and come up with the different areas of support that we might need. We do needs assessments and resource mapping, so we have a lot of those things in place as well. The mental health referral pathway is something that we had to establish a few years ago, and so we do have that outlined. And then the sustainability, you know, where do we get the funds to make sure that we have the people in place to operate within, you know, whether it's identifying students or going through that referral pathway, and a lot of the pieces that we look at then for data. And so, we'll kind of go through a lot of those as we go through these slides. So, that continuum of mental health supports, really, we look at tier one, tier two, tier three. Over on the left-hand side, you've got people that are maybe well, where they're living either in recovery, so they struggled at one point with some mental health, or they maybe have never really struggled that much with mental health, and so they're in that well area. You may have people that encounter some challenges in life, and some people are more resilient than others, and they're able to go through this continuum a little bit faster. Others may get hung up in different areas with, within this circle. A lot of it, you know, as they're having challenges, if we can get an early intervention in place, they're more likely to get back to well more quickly. And so, our next several slides here are really going to talk about tier one, tier two, and tier three services. So, at the tier one level, we, as a district, provide quite a few things. We do have curriculum at the elementary, middle, and high school level. The second step curriculum is something that our school counselors go into each classroom. They have lessons that are based off of that second step, and a lot of that is, you know, protective behaviors. So, then how do you protect yourself so that you build some of that resiliency? Brainology is something that's new at the middle school this year. We purchased that, and they've been using that with their success class, talking about growth mindset through that brainology, and also signs of suicide. That's also some curriculum that we've been using, that our school counselors push into the classrooms, and it's really about helping students identify when some of their classmates may be struggling. The youth mental, oh, little fast. The youth mental health first aid, we are one of the few districts in the area that I know of that provides training to all of our staff. At least, we're trying to get all of our staff. Right now, we're at 76% of our staff that are trained. We do a new staff training every year in August, so our new staff get trained in it, and then we're always continuing to try and catch up, and that includes bus drivers, our lunch staff. We're trying to get everybody. And really, what the youth mental health first aid does, it helps staff identify students that may be struggling, or even some of the other staff members that they work with that might be struggling, so that they can then refer them on for other services if needed. We purchase calm corner, regulation station materials across elementary and middle school. Those are spaces that students can go into if they're maybe struggling in class. They maybe don't need to take a break outside of the class. They're not disruptive or anything, but they just need a second to kind of gather their thoughts again, and so we provide us a space within the classrooms that they can go there, take two, three minutes, set a timer. It just kind of helps them regulate themselves that something outside isn't needed. They can maybe still even pay attention to what's going on in class, so that they aren't missing anything curriculum-wise. We're still working on implementing pyramid model now in the, in the kindergarten level. I would say we're pretty solid at the 4K level. Pyramid model is very similar to the PBIS stuff that we've been working on across the district, but it's at that younger level, and a lot of it works on the language that you're using with the students to try and get everybody on the you're using with the students to try and get everybody on the same page. You know, when you hear us talk about, okay, friends, that's a way for the students to recognize, or, you know, when we start talking about using walking feet, versus, you know, telling you, hey, you need to walk in the halls, hey, use walking feet. The kids really connect with that, and it really helps them with that. Staff wellness, I don't know if you have seen some of the stuff that we've been pushing out this month especially, we've been trying to give staff different pointers on what they can do to try and help themselves when it comes to mental health, and I would say throughout the course of this school year, at different in-service days, we have different activities that we try to do to help our staff with their, with their own mental wellness. The next two pieces are the social emotional screeners that we use, the ACT Mosaic we use in grades five, eight, nine, and 10. That screener is really looking at the different components that you see with the first bullet, like how good our students at sustaining effort, getting along with others, maintaining their composure, keeping an open mind, social connection, or even that school climate. And so, we're trying to identify those pieces through that screener. When students get flagged in a specific area, we might be able to set up some, some small groups, if you have somebody that, or four or five students that are struggling with sustaining effort, your school counselors might grab those four or five for a couple weeks and just talk about, so what does it look like when you're getting stuck, so that they can try and get reset, and hopefully build some skills towards being able to sustain effort. At the elementary level, we use SEL Web. Again, that's really focused on the relationship skills, social awareness, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, all about identifying emotions and being able to regulate themselves, so that instead of having to leave the classroom or blowing up a classroom, they are able to regulate their own emotions and understand, okay, I'm struggling right now, how can I calm myself down? That's really what we're trying to do, and we do a screener in grades one and three, kind of the same purpose that we can try and identify some students that maybe are lacking some skills in one of those areas. You know, the relationship skills is probably one of the biggest things at the elementary, trying to teach kids just how to get along, you know, so that when they're out on the playground, you're not having them fight over a ball, they can come up with strategies on how to get along that way. And then, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is administered every other year, and that's really through the state and the county, and we, as a district, have always given that to our seventh grade students and our 10th grade students. The tier two, I talked about how early intervention is key a lot of times, and so if we can catch students before they're in a mental health crisis, that's obviously going to be better. We use a lot of different points of data for trying to identify students that may be in need of a check-in or checkout. Some of them include our behavior data, might be absences, if we're seeing students that are missing school a lot, we can get them on a check-in at times to make sure that we're connecting with them, using a mentoring program. I talked about the small groups that we use based off of some of that data from the screeners, and that's where that social academic instruction or SAG groups come from, students that have been showing on some of those screeners, and it might not even be the screener, it might be a staff member that's like, hey, we're really kind of struggling in this area with a student, and usually it's identified through their academics might be slipping, they're tardy to class all the time, some of those pieces are where staff then can bring in some of the data. And then, just some individual services at that tier two level, where school counselors might meet with, meet with a student for a couple of weeks, you know, family might be going through a divorce or something like that, and the student just needs a little support for a few weeks to kind of understand what's going on. The school social worker meets with students in the same capacity, school psychs at times do as well. And then, tier three, this is where our school-based mental health, where we've got our practitioner and, you know, the district therapist with Katie Mashinsky, but then Amanda Brown, she does a lot of the referrals and finding connections for students and families, so it's, if we have available, availability with Katie, you know, we try to get students to maybe meet with her. We have outside agencies that families are maybe more comfortable with, rather than saying, ah, we've got somebody with the district, and so you can see the list of outside agencies that we do partner with. There's a bit of a, I guess, pathway that you have to go through, I'm not going to ask Randy to click into that, but you can kind of see the outline that we go through when it comes to trying to refer students for different services. And we really try to focus on year-round continuum of services. Last summer, we had students that we were picking up by shuttle to bring them in, to provide some of those therapy services, we've done some virtual meetings with students through the course of the summer with Katie and that student to continue some of that therapy throughout the summer. And then, we do get referrals that sometimes require that outside agency, so the county, for some CCS services, the Comprehensive Community Services, that's where the county might provide a social worker to work with that student, or maybe the family, and a lot of those are, you know, if it's mental health or substance abuse issues, and then there's children's long-term support that is also through the county. And so, again, you've got the counties that are providing, the county is providing a lot of the services, we really try to get them on-site with a lot of the meetings that we can continue to meet the needs of the kids, and it's really connecting the school with the community resources. And then, of course, the pre-delinquency and pre-truancy, and so our attendance coordinators, as we're working through attendance issues, they'll meet with families, meet with students, meet with administration, again, it's that team effort of trying to connect kids and get them back on track with their attendance with that piece. And then, just to try and evaluate our system as a whole, we use something called the SHAPE Assessment, and it stands for School Health Assessment and Performance Evaluation, and it's got seven domains that we look at, from teaming being the first one, all the way through the impact that we're having with the different pieces that we put in place, based off of where we, we end up ranking some of the questions in those different domains. As a building, whether it's Hoggan, Tainter, Hilltop, we try to develop some goals on how we can continue to improve with how we're catching students that may need some supports in those pieces. It might be where one building needs to focus a little bit more on the data collection piece, and so that's where their focus would tend to be for the next year, trying to develop a better system for it. Some of it might be, you know, we don't have a very good team yet, and so we need to develop a better team approach to trying to identify and sort through some of that data. And so then, speaking of the data, these are a lot of the pieces that we use for data, that screener data is just one piece of it. We do look at the Warrior Room or the Reset Room numbers at Tainter in the middle school. Youth Risk Behavior Survey, like I said, that's every other year, but we do take a look at that and try and identify what are some things that we need to do at the tier one level. If we identify that, you know, a large chunk of our students are struggling in an area, we need to address that. The Calmering Corner data, that is something that we're trying to strengthen a little bit more at the elementary level, and that's where we would tag team with the school counselor, if we've got a student that's going to that place to calm down a lot, the school counselor is going to get involved to try and figure out, okay, what's really going on, why does that student have to go there, or why is that student choosing to go there so frequently? We use the SHAPE Assessment, our behavior data, so all of those pieces. The last little bit that I threw at the bottom there was just the school-based mental health referral numbers over the last several years. 1819 was kind of when we first started on this journey, making referrals for school-based mental health, and that's when we had the different agencies that would come in and meet with students on-site, and you can see how the numbers grew every year. This year, it's down a little bit from last year, and so I'm hoping that that is a result of us kind of coming out of COVID, as well as being able to catch some of the students early on, providing some of those tier one services that we have with our second step curriculum, and with some of the pieces that we've been implementing at the elementary level, hopefully, we are starting to see students make a change.
Are those all the tiers, or are those considered tier three numbers?
So, those are the tier three numbers, so those are the students that were, where we went through kind of that whole flowchart operation of getting them to a therapist. And not all of those students actually saw a therapist, but they were kind of placed into that referral process, and that's across the whole district, so not just one building, but district-wide, those are the numbers of students that went through that referral process.
Do you have any idea how that breaks down by grades at all?
By grade?
Yeah, like, is there more elementary than high school, or?
You know, I hadn't really drilled into it that far, we certainly could check and kind of see where that is, so I guess I wouldn't have a good answer for you tonight.
Okay, then I wanted to ask on the, on the social emotional learning screeners, the ACT Mosaic and the SEL Web, and also the Youth Risk Behavior, are those tools that you use to screen all students in the district, or are they just a certain group of students?
They're just a specific grade level, so like the ACT Mosaic, we do grades five, grade eight, grade nine, and grade 10, and it really gives us a baseline of how we're doing more at that tier one level. So, those screeners aren't really catching students that are maybe having suicidal ideation, and part of the Youth Risk Behavior maybe would, but it doesn't drill down to the individual level, so the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, that would give us kind of a percentage, it would say, so 30% of, of your high school students have thought of suicide within the past six months. It'll give you those kinds of numbers, but it won't give you specifics for individuals.
So, when you test them, you're testing all students in all those grades?
In those grades, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we do send out letters prior to doing the screening, so if parents wanted to opt out, they can. You know, I know that that's been a hot topic over the last several years, and I think a lot of it is just people don't understand what it truly is, and so, you know, when they understand that it's we're trying to identify students that struggle with relationship skills, and a lot of those social skills, and that we're wanting to build those skills so that they have more resiliencies, that they're able to attend to a task better, that's ultimately what we're looking at when we're looking at those screeners, and it's more trying to look at it globally, what are things that we need to put in place in our building, or maybe with some specific, you know, smaller groups of students to try and support them.
Okay, and then what happens when you have a student where you've tried everything that we offer to help them, and you've exhausted all those options, and they still need something, what, what do you do with them?
We keep digging, keep trying to find something else, you know, when you start pulling in the county, obviously, the county has more resources than we do, you know, and our school counselors, I don't know how many safety plans they go through in the course of the year, so that's, you know, those are the students that are really, really struggling, where they've had some suicidal thoughts, and they've made some comments to people where we bring those in, you know, and I would say our, our school counselors, sometimes they go through streaks where they, they see a ton of students, and they're going over safety plans a lot, and it kind of ebbs and flows a little bit, and I'd say middle school, high school is especially more common, elementary, we might get a few, not as much.
And then, how much continuing education or seminars or opportunities do we give our staff to help them deal with those issues?
Yeah, you know, so we have done some, we try to use our in-service days to provide a little training here and there, and it's something that we're going to continue to do. I know May 5, we had brought in somebody from the Office of School Safety to present to the high school and the middle school staff, we had had a lot of tragedies this year, and we knew that our staff was struggling, and we also knew that our school counselors, you know, their role a lot of times is to support the students and to support the staff, got to be really heavy for them, and so I didn't want to lean on them to be the facilitators of that, and so we did reach out and brought some people from the community in to actually facilitate small groups for our staff then to hopefully process through that, and that's a presentation that at some point, we want to deliver to the elementary staff as well, just didn't work to be able to do it on that date.
I heard such good things about that, though, from the staff, it sounded really cool.
Yeah, I think it was a very good healing opportunity for a lot of our staff.
And Diane, I'm glad you brought that up, because a part of, like, when I think about youth mental health first aid training for staff members, it's more trying to recognize, oh, there may be an issue here, I'm not qualified to fix that, or deal with that, or maybe work with that, okay, where can we possibly get a student some help that, that they may need? And so, that's a part of what it is, just trying to maybe recognize, maybe there's an issue here, and where can we possibly get some other assistance?
Yeah, you know, in the month of May, we really tried to focus on our staff, so we sent out a survey at the beginning of every week so far this, this month, basically with some tips on how you can take care of your, your own mental health, and just ask staff to fill it out, it wasn't like a high-pressure survey or test or anything like that, but it was just a way for them to start kind of thinking about their own mental health. We want them to go into the summer to be, and have it as an opportunity to kind of rejuvenate, reset, and hopefully, next fall, we can come back and continue to provide those supports for our staff, because if they're not healthy, not well, it's going to be pretty hard for them to be able to service our students.
And to take that one step further, you know, Karen Dahlberg in HR area, or Katie Mashinsky, you know, have been regularly sending out things about, for instance, our employee assistance program, you know, most employers have some sort of employee assistance program to provide assistance or information related to our health insurance plan for employees as well, related to potential resources they can seek out.
Yeah, and one of the other things that Katie has been doing this month as well, each week, she's been presenting a topic of therapy, and it isn't come in and I'm going to provide therapy, it's more like, this is what play-based therapy is. If you are interested in getting some play-based therapy, here are some resources that you can go to, EMRD, and so she's got a bunch of these different types of therapy that she's presenting for staff, just so that they know what it is, and that way, it isn't quite so scary to be like, well, I don't want to go to therapy, it's more of a, oh, you know, I could go in and I can talk about this in this setting, or here's a, you know, I've been struggling with this, this is a type of therapy that might help me, you know, get past whatever mind block I've got, or whatever, as a, as a staff member. So, it's just a, again, a way for staff to kind of hear about different types of therapy that are out there, so.
Mr. Belcheck, that pathway that, that you were talking about, that there's a hot link to, is that sort of a triage, triage pathway, where you, you have to make some sort of diagnosis, and then decide where the most appropriate person to send the?
Probably not like a diagnosis necessarily, kind of like that, it's more along lines of, so what kind of data do we have to support a referral to, like, an outside provider? Or what kind of data do we have in place already on the student that we've collected, you know, where maybe Katie Mashinsky could see them, or have they not really risen to the point where they need to go an outside agency or school-based mental health, but is it something where our school counselors can maybe handle it first, before it goes on to that? So, kind of like a triage level, but not necessarily like a diagnosis, if that makes sense.
So, it's not necessarily just, this student is having problems, who's the next person up with an opening?
Not just that, no.
More than that?
Yeah, yeah, it goes a little deeper than that. Yeah, you know, if you click into that, you guys can kind of look through that, it's like a two-page document or three-page document, I didn't really want to go through that tonight, just.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you. Nate, if you could dig into those numbers, and then let Randy know, he can just forward it.
He can just forward it to us.
Then Randy can forward it to us in the next update. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have the Athletic Code of Conduct, second reading, and I don't believe there was any changes to, from the first reading, so this is an action item, I would entertain a motion to approve the Code of Conduct for the athletes.
I will motion to approve the Code of Conduct.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion?
Just a question, sorry, jumped the gun there. Under Academics, Recommended Changes, I was just wondering, I'm not clear on what the criteria are to regain eligibility, because what is crossed out, you know, defines how the student regain eligibility, but then, with the revisions, it seems as though, it depends on end of the term grades, but I know that a student isn't out for the full term, so I guess I'm just a little confused about that.
I thought when I was reading it, it was like two weeks, you had two weeks to...
Originally, that's the way it was, but with the, I mean, for two weeks is crossed out, and student regain eligibility when a weekly check reveals them to be meeting the criteria is crossed out, and then it just refers to at the end of the term, so I'm sure it has to be before that, so maybe I'm just missing something, but it, it wasn't really too clear to me, or if there should be those criteria in there yet.
So, it should have been, Mr. Bice, I don't know if you can add to this, but it says, should a check reveal a student to not be meeting eligibility criteria, period of probation will be instituted, I believe it, is it for one week? I believe it, is it for one week and?
So I think there's, the way I look at it, I think there's two different ways to look at it. There's the grade checks that go out during the term, and then the students are in that probationary period. The thing on that is, I think what Mr. Ankle's question might be is if a student fails a class, so let's say a student fails a fourth-term class, when are they eligible, for example, in the fall sports season? I think that's a, because that class is no longer in the process of, right, because it ended. I think it was a portion of the season. I think.
Yeah. And, and at the end of a term, that's, you know, clearly defined there. At the end of a term, the term grade will be used to determine eligibility. Any student who does not pass all classes will be ineligible for the period, including at least the next 15 regular scheduled school days and nights. So that's clear. But I, I believe it was, it's not laid out. I believe it was a probation period.
I hate to interrupt, but yeah, I'm reading here, should a check reveal a student to not meet, be meeting eligibility criteria, a period of probation will be instituted for two weeks. So they're on probation. Should the student not meet eligibility criteria the following week, the student becomes academically ineligible. The period of ineligible, ineligibility will run from Monday to Monday and they'll be checked periodically until they can meet eligibility.
Yeah.
And then.
Page is on.
That's on the philosophy, philosophy statement, I guess, under academics.
Page two.
Two of 10. Roman numeral two.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I kind of was reading it, sorry.
Phil, this is a bit confusing because I don't know if the highlighted piece actually matches up with the final copy. So I think the final copy is correct. Thank you, Don, for pointing that out. It says, yeah, the following week, the student becomes, sorry, the period of probation will be instituted for two weeks. And then not met the following week becomes academically ineligible.
Okay.
So there, that does let, this is actually a bit confusing.
Thanks for drilling down on that.
That's no problem. All right. Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. And the Athletic Code of Conduct has been approved. Next, we have the 2324 Elementary Handbook. That is a second reading. And I don't believe there was any changes to that. So that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve that handbook.
Move to approve.
Yep. Correct.
Well, good memory. But it had been changed already during the meeting, I think, probably.
Very observant.
All right. I need a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. And the Elementary Handbook has been approved. Next, we have our Compensation Committee Meeting Update.
Oh, yeah, we met on the 10th of May. All members were present. And our first item was the co-curricular and extracurricular pay schedules. And we're looking at those, well, the admin is going to bring us a proposal, basically tying those positions to the base salary so that when negotiations or when updates to that compensation is made, it will translate right over into that schedule so that we, it will be seamless. So we don't have anything to finalize, but we'll report on that when we get it. Our teacher compensation, if you recall, we were on kind of a three-year path to narrow the differences between, you know, a teacher's been here for seven years and they've taught for 10 and someone has been here for 10 years or what, what have you. And we're trying to kind of get those to line up so that, you know, we're compensating people for how many years they've taught and, and, and kind of getting that more in line so we have better flow there. But in addition to that, we're still, you know, looking to move forward with a $500 increase on the base and then moving the top up $1,500. So another kind of step, if you will. So we're looking to do that. And then we talked about our support staff compensation. And there was, as we made some adjustments to that schedule, there was two schedules, but we're looking to combine those back together now as it's been a little bit of time. So people are more in line with that. And then giving each kind of area a dollar raise total with 75 cent on the base. And then we do offer a, a bonus provided the, the staff or individual accomplishes their goals, and that's a 25 cent bonus. And so that would be a dollar total if they basically do their job well. And then we, was brought to us a 12-month support staff to receive the same retirement benefit as teacher group. We didn't have any costing on that, so I guess that's sort of to be determined. And then a proposal by the pair of professional support staff for paid time off, tabled that a little bit. Our next meeting date is May 31st.
All right. Thank you for that update. Any questions?
Steve, it's been a while since I, do we give years of service credit in other districts when they come to our district?
That's what we're kind of working on. Yeah. We did, but it was like maximum five and some people were 15 years in the district. And so, so if we look at, we asked years ago for kind of a scattergram of where teachers were in regards to pay versus total years of service or years of our teaching. And we had some definite outliers that, you know, were good quality staff that we kind of felt like we're being punished by a random policy that really in this day and age, you don't need, because we need to recruit teachers and quality teachers are better than, you know, not better, but they're just typically have a little more experience. So we shouldn't be handcuffed by what we can offer them. So we've kind of narrowed the gap with the people that work here. And then we give them more flexibility with the admin if they want to bring somebody in that's worked for 15 years or what have you.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
And Randy, if I'm not mistaken, we're in the second year of a three-year to.
Next year will be the second year.
Next year will be the second year. Yeah, this coming, this next coming school year.
You bet.
Will be the second of three years to get everybody up to that line, close to it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that report. Next, the Curriculum Committee, Committee Meeting met on May 16th. Diane, will you give us the report on that?
Sure. Um, everybody was present at that meeting and we approved the minutes. And then we had a pretty busy agenda, actually. I'll start with the request for foreign travel, for students to go to Guatemala and Belize. That would be in June of 2025. Just to review that our policy requires a two-year pre-approval for those kinds of trips. And they have to detail the financial arrangements and all travel details as well as the educational benefits for our students. So the, the trip report was really good. Jessica did a great job providing us with all of those details. The trip is designed to provide an immersion experience for Spanish language students. And our committee will be recommending approval for that trip tonight. However, before that, I've asked Randy if he could just address the possibility of any safety concerns. In today's climate, there's a lot of places where Americans travel that they're targeted for kidnapping. And if it's, that's still happening in 2025, you know, how, how will we look at that? How will we handle that?
Yeah. And so there, thank you, Diane. And so with that, we have it in our, our policy on, on foreign travel. And then Jessica had some of that detailed as well. And I'll even go back to, I think it was summer of 2020. We had a, a trip that originally was scheduled to, to go to France that summer. We thought our staff and students could probably get there, okay, maybe, but weren't sure about them being able to get home. And so we did cancel that trip and, and it was before the final date. And so all money was refunded. But in policy, we have it, the district administrator and/or Board of Education may withdraw sponsorship if we believe there's a danger to student safety and/or health, if there's war, political unrest, or any government-imposed travel restrictions. So with all of these trips, as we, you know, get towards that, that date where we need to make a, a final decision on any of that, we, we take these pieces into account. So that's something we'll always keep an eye on.
Okay. Do we want to ask for approval right now?
We'll take them one at a time. So yes. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2025 Guatemala Belize trip.
I will make that motion to approve the trip to Belize.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed.
I think they have their first meeting about that on Wednesday, I want to say. It's exciting. Okay. And then next, we had a report from Jen Halsted and Kurt Bohoki regarding the Advanced Placement United States History Course. This is a new elective course that's being offered beginning in the fall of 2023 as a replacement for the Sophomore Social Studies Class, which is United States History 10. So this new class will be US History 10 or as a social studies elective for juniors and seniors. One of the exciting things is that this course can provide an opportunity for students to earn college credit by either passing the AP exam or actually enrolling in the course as a college student for college credit. There's two textbooks that we, we reviewed and we'll be recommending those to the board for approval tonight. I believe Kevin has the, the big thick one. It's called America's History by Henrietta et al. And the other is United States History. This is by Amsco, Perfection Learning. The larger book is a hardcover book that will be the main text used in the classroom. And this one is a soft cover, which is too bad because it's a really good book, but it's going to get beat up very quickly. And as I understand it, I'll have Marsha maybe explain too, but as I understand it, this book is more for helping to study and prepare for the AP exam as well as, I think they said it would be used for students who would require easier reading and maybe couldn't handle the rigor of the other one. So I was wondering, Marsha, if you could maybe come up and answer a couple of questions for us. First of all, I was wondering if you could explain what happens for students who are not interested in the AP option and they just want to take the history course? Does this course actually replace US 10 History? And is it such that any of our students can take it and get through it?
It's an option so that students could take US 10, regular US 10, regular United States History or choose to take the AP. They'd talk to teachers, guidance counselors, there'd be some guidance for helping make sure that students would be successful with the AP class.
Okay. So if they start in the AP class and it's like, oh, we can't do this, it's too much.
Yeah, there's some different options they talked about, including with the college credit as well, that if they sign up for the college credit and realize they don't want to, you know, have a poor grade, that will be on their college transcript. There's a window where they can opt back out then. So there is some flexibility.
So could you explain how fortunate we are to have a teacher like Jen Halsted who can do this and how the college credit option works?
Sure. We are very fortunate. She's highly credentialed. She met the criteria to be able to teach this college course at our high school because of her education and experience and the work that she's done to prepare for that. She's been teaching AP Euro for us, AP European History and, and has her master's in history as well as in education. So yeah, very highly qualified. And for that reason, she's able to either or teach at the same time, I guess, AP and with that option of partnering with UW of Claire Baron County, where students can actually enroll for college credit and receive that credit from taking that course. So we're starting that process now, getting students to apply.
I don't want to steal your thunder, but there was going to be some cost if you enrolled in col, in the college course to the parent or student to get the credit. But what I did like, that Kurt said, is if the child was on free and reduced, that we would maybe cover some of the cost as a district. So, I mean, I liked that. I think so everybody kind of had a, you know, a chance to take that course and get college credit, which is really neat at the high school level.
Do you recall the figures for the free and reduced?
$100 per credit, and I believe it's a five credit. I'm looking for my notes on that now. Five credit course, I think I'm remembering that.
It was five or six, yeah.
Yeah, one might have even been six. And so at $100 per credit, and then, as you said, students with demonstrated financial need between the university and the, and the school district, there'd be support to help pay those fees.
Okay. Thank you.
That answer.
The questions? Anyone else have questions for Marsha?
Well, even just going back to the credentialing part, that's not, to be able to, to teach the course for college credit, that's not something everyone can do. It's, it's because of the courses and the masters in history that she has that she's able to do that. So yes, we're very fortunate.
It's a great opportunity.
And so I would need a motion to approve the textbooks, the US History and the name of that one?
This was United States History as well.
The United States History. Approval for those two for the AP US History course.
I'll make the motion to approve the US History textbooks.
All right.
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. And the textbooks have been approved.
Yep. Then we just have a couple more updates. Marsha gave us some updates on various curriculum projects that are going on. First of all, the elementary teachers have had professional training with their new resources in literacy that they have chosen for piloting this fall. K1 has chosen a different set of resources in grades two through four based upon how they felt it would work the best for their age group and, and class level. I believe we gave a detailed report on that in a previous board meeting when we talked about those choices. So I wasn't going to really go into that, but if there's any questions, Marsha could probably answer them. Moving on, we heard about the work that's been done with the middle school math curriculum resources. Grades six through eight will be piloting illustrative math from McGraw-Hill next fall. Marsha said that it will be quite different than the current methods. Illustrative mathematics is a problem-based core curriculum with more story problems and practical situation problems, which I was terrible at in school, so I hope our kids are better. And then the middle school avant-garde courses are adding coding and robotics for next fall's eighth grade success class. So I'm sure that'll be really interesting to some of our students. Martha also shared a little bit about the multi-level systems of support team's mission and vision in their framework. And lastly, she informed us about the possibility of school districts being required to teach a personal finance literacy course in the future. Apparently, there's a bill in the assembly right now. It's Bill 109. And if that passed, it would require students to earn a half a credit of personal finance literacy in order to graduate.
That'll put the scheduler into a little bit of a tizzy.
And we do offer that course now. I think on a typical year, we have about 60 or so seniors that, that take that course. And hear a lot of positives from parents on an annual basis. I'll probably have five parents talk to me, say, it's really a great course and, and, you know, it's, it's prepares kiddos for life after high school and beyond.
Removing out.
That's why the parents appreciate it.
So that's it, our next.
No, it was a, forget it.
Okay. That's all from us. Our next meeting is scheduled for June 20th at 5:30 in the conference room.
Thank you for that update. Next, we have the Board Policy and Legislative Advocacy Committee Meeting Update. It's just the second reading of Policy 132, 141, 150, 151.2. Thank you. Thank you for that update. Next, we have the Board Policy and Legislative Advocacy Committee meeting update. It's just the second reading of policy one thirty-two, one forty-one, one fifty, one fifty-one point two, one fifty-one point three, one sixty-two, one sixty-three, one sixty-three point one, one seventy-one point two, one seventy-two, one seventy-three, one seventy-four, one eighty, one eighty-two, and one eighty-three. And this is the second reading. I would entertain a motion to approve those policies.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the policies have been approved. Next, we get into the information section of our agenda. And we'll start off with the handbook committee meeting meeting minutes on April eighteenth.
Yeah, just a handbook. And Kevin, if you don't mind, I'll mention communications as well. So those those minutes are in your packet. Handbook will have our first reading of our of our employee handbook for twenty-three, twenty-four at the at the next board meeting, that first board meeting in June with just not a significant changes, but just some updates. And then our communications committee meeting, yes, we held on May ninth. And it's a chance for representatives from all grade levels across the district at all schools to to come together and talk about various pieces impacting the district. And we meet at least quarterly with those.
Any questions? Thank you for that update. Next, our WSB Public Policy Correspondent update.
Okay, I listened in on the Capitol chats that were presented by WASB on the twelfth of May and the nineteenth of May. And there are a number of interesting bills. I'll just kind of run down the just the titles, the subjects of some of the bills and then focus on a couple, one of which was just mentioned. Interesting ones, a financial literacy course. That looks like it's could well be on the way to passage. And our district is in good shape, I guess, but there are some districts that don't do it. There is a bill about interaction with law enforcement, teaching that in the schools. There's one that's going to require an anti-anti choking devices in the schools. Since some kids, you know, with disabilities may not be amenable to the Heimlich maneuver and things like that. And that's probably going to pass because, I mean, there's there's really not a not a good way to oppose that either. So and it's useful. Opioid antagonist availability, again, likely will pass. It's something that may be lifesaving in certain situations. And it's pretty easy to use. The fund, the the cost of it is not necessarily going to be too great. It's going to require two doses per school. It's about fifty dollars per dose. I don't imagine a lot of them will be used. And I I think, you know, I don't know exactly how long the expiration is, but I think it's probably quite a while.
I don't think there's any adverse reactions to Narcan. I mean, I don't think you can
Yes, there can be, but not generally in healthy young people. I think the the biggest problem is not likely to be in the school, but to think that by giving one dose of Narcan, you're good. And then the Narcan wears off before the narcotic does. So you got to know how to monitor the patients. And you still have to know what you're doing, which is why it was sort of a controlled drug for a long time. So there could be potential problems with it, but it's going to happen.
We have an expert.
And then there is something about reading education. They're talking about a few coaches, twenty-five coaches statewide, a few million dollars, but it's not all going to be funded. Another bill that could be useful kind of touches on on what Randy was just saying. There is a bill in the assembly that considers maintaining a lifetime teaching license possible, even if years have been spent outside the classroom, which kind of makes sense, too, because if you've been a teacher and you go into administration for a few years, I don't think, you know, it makes sense that you shouldn't have to lose your license. So then there's another bill in the assembly with instruction concerning Mong and Asian Americans. And that's kind of interesting, especially tonight. You know, we heard that that award to the student. And one of the comments by the WASB person was that, you know, a lot of these a lot of people are here from Southeast Asia because they've been persecuted because they helped us during the Vietnam War. And I think maybe we sometimes just focus on the problems with social integration and things like that without forgetting what they went through and why they're they're here. And then there's a bill that sort of tinkers with the community advisory committees in case a district teaches human growth and development. So back to the interesting ones. First, I don't know where the Assembly Bill one nineteen and Senate Bill one twenty-five about interaction with law enforcement are going to go. There haven't been hearings yet. But it would require the DPI to develop instruction on how to interact with law enforcement with mutual respect. Have it taught at least twice each in grades five through eight, nine through twelve, and school boards would have to opt out by passing a resolution. And I, you know, today's climate, I think you can see where that could be useful because obviously kids aren't always getting taught that at home. And then the financial literacy course sounds like it's going to happen because there's a universal consensus, basically consensus again. It should universal opinions that the content of the course is good and useful. Some of the things that are going to be taught are financial mindset, risk and insurance, credit and debit, some other things I couldn't write fast enough to write them all down. It would be for the twenty twenty-eight graduating class. Could count, they, school boards may allow it to count as graduation credit instead of a half credit of something else. It's technically unfunded, but there is, there are, there's a private group particularly called Next Gen Personal Finance. And I I should look into what they are, but they're pushing it and they appear to be willing to help with finances and training and free curricular materials. They have trained teachers already in Wisconsin with twenty hours of professional development at a five hundred dollar stipend. And they seem to mean business because they want to provide eight hours of financial training to a teacher in person, not online, because they really believe that that in-person training is much better. Which I think reflects their earnestness to do this, really. So that's that's basically it for this week. Thank you for listening.
I think thank you is better said.
All right. Thank you for that. Upcoming meeting schedule. The only thing on the agenda for meetings is the July fourteenth and fifteenth Summer Leadership Institute for Safe Schools, Healthy Students. And that is over in Green Bay. If you can attend that or plan to attend that, please let Colleen know so she can get you registered for that. And with that, we will look towards Daniel. Welcome.
Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you. So for the high school, I believe this week is the beginning of WIAA playoffs. I just came before this meeting, I came from the track meet. When I saw we were doing pretty good and our track has been breaking quite a few school records recently. So that's always a good sign. Boys Golf has their WIAA Regional tomorrow at Turtleback. Softball also has a home playoff game, I believe, against Altoona tomorrow here. Baseball plays on Thursday. There's also a regional here against Osceola. The fall sports meetings were held today during homeroom, so they're preparing for that. But then also regarding the conservancy project and being able to begin the orchard. The funds raised for that were about a thousand dollars, around nine hundred dollars were raised through the penny drive. And they are predicting that that will be able to plant about a dozen or so trees. And they will be planted on June first is the plan.
Thank you. And I understand from the last time you were here, the bonfire went really well?
Yes, even I was surprised at how well the bonfire went. So it went very well.
Yes, yes. It was good to see. Yes, yes. That was that was nice. So thank you for that update. And then District Administrator comments.
Just a few other things going on. May twenty-fourth and two nights from now, we've got the High School Choir Awards Concert at seven PM. Graduation Friday night, seven thirty. And preliminary look at the weather. It looks like we're okay. Going to be outside on the on the stadium campus. It'll be wonderful. Just a reminder, no school on Monday for Memorial Day. And our last day for students is June sixth. Also, if you're thinking about registering for summer school, that's also the last day for summer school registration is June sixth. And then up through grade eight. And then also Mr. Bohoki today just sent out an email to parents of high school students about summer school opportunities at the high school level for English, Science, Social Studies, and Math. And then also Courtney Foss reached out from the pool. Spring swimming lessons came to a close. They were very pleased to be able to offer those again. June first will have increased hours at the pool starting as well as some fee changes. We haven't changed fees, I believe, in over ten years. And she said there's already seven hundred students signed up for summer swimming lessons. So that's outstanding to see as well. That's awesome. So and we're going to have the staff to to be able to to do that. So that's simply outstanding.
All right. Thank you for that update.
May I ask one something additional? I noticed in Erin Hunter's CB that she has experience with a summer teen volunteer reading program. Do we have anything like that here?
A summer teen?
Apparently she coached teens to volunteer to help with the reading program. It sounded really useful.
Yeah, I can ask about that. Yep.
And that, and and then I had sort of related is is using our Spanish-speaking students to for immersion Spanish.
You bet.
Spanish.
Yep. See ya. Thank you. You bet. Look at that.
Any other questions? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
That's Steve.